Well.
Okay. No.
Okay. Is, uh, are we live?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I'll call, uh, the May twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Ventura County Planning Commission to order. Secretary, please call the roll.
All right. Commissioner Boydston?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner McFail? Okay. He's waving, and I think we're having an audio issue. Commissioner Mc, let me finish roll call. Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner McFail, you can't hear. So. Is his audio, okay, so he's muted or I think he's muted. Let me try this, let me try this. Okay. Commissioner McFail, it doesn't look like, I now understand what was going on. You and I were still on the phone on speakerphone. And that's what people were hearing. And so I think your home computer does not have audio. He can't hear me, can he? I'm just speaking. Commissioner King, I'm gonna go ahead and pause the meeting until we can get this set up. Hold on a second.
Okay.
Start the meeting. We've already taken roll call. So.
Okay. Let's move on to, uh, pledge, uh, to the flag. Everyone, please stand and join me in renewing our pledge to the country. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Okay, do we have any public comments regarding items not on the agenda?
Let me just check the email. Last I checked, we did not have any, but if you can hold on one second. No, we don't have any, um, public comments. Would you like me to put up the screen?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. All right. Would you like me to read that, Commissioner King? Or did you want to read that to the public?
No, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the May twentieth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission hearing. If you wish to make a comment on a specific case, please email your comments of two hundred and fifty words or less to planning dot P C comments at ventura dot org. That's P L A N N I N G period P C C O M M E N T S at ventura dot org. Please indicate in your subject line which agenda item. Item number four is public comments that are not addressed on this agenda. Item number six is regarding case number PL two one zero 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 three with appellant Bruce Dickinson. Staff will read your comments into the Planning Commission. Any comments received after an agenda item has been made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. I have to unshare.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. How do I unshare? I can't un, there we go, it's over here. I moved it.
Great. Okay. Item number five, approval of the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion or a request to amend?
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Boydston, did you second?
I did.
Okay, good, I just caught the tail end of that. Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner, uh, Educa, seconded by Commissioner Boydston. No further comments, all in favor, uh? Let's have, let's do it this way. Will the secretary please call the roll on approval of the minutes?
Okay. Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Yes.
Commissioner McFail? I think I hung up on him.
No.
Commissioner McFail? Oh, he's, uh, we're trying to adjust his audio again. This is a first for me. Not sure what happens now. Uh, let me see if I can chat with him. Commissioner McFail? I have no idea what to do now. I need to send this to Earl. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Do I? Do I just, uh, pass by Commissioner McFail? Commissioner King?
No, I think we have to resolve this issue.
Me too. I'm gonna try to chat with him, so let's see if you can, guys can bear with me. I'm gonna send him a quick chat. I don't know if he'll pick that up.
Well, probably not with the phone to his ear.
He's, um, we're trying to resolve his issue with, um... And I'd, I'll try to send him.
You know, I don't want to play IT tech, but did anybody check to make sure his speaker is turned on on his computer?
Yes, we've, uh, checked his speaker and he... Um, we were having problems. Can I get his, um, phone number? I'm gonna send him a text. I, I may have to pause again until we get this resolved.
I mean, it, it seems like such a small issue, but it is a...
No, it's not, I agree with you. Okay, we got him. He's, we just need to get him to unmute. He's hanging up. Can we ask him to unmute? Okay, good.
Unmute, Earl.
I'm trying. I saw him. There we go.
Okay, there we are.
Yay!
Perfect. Sorry for all the problems.
That's okay.
Okay. Let's, let's finish calling the roll on the minutes.
Okay, this is for approval of the minutes. Commissioner McFail?
Aye.
That passes five zero. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience, Commissioner McFail. I know it's not easy in the morning.
All right. Thank you guys for your patience.
Moving on to item six, case number BL twenty-one dash zero 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 three. Applicants requesting that the Planning Commission overturn a planning director's decision to terminate coastal PD permit application, case number PL sixteen dash zero 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 six, and direct the Planning Division to allow the applicant more time. At this point, I'd like to ask the case planner, Angela Georgiev, to present the staff report. Angela?
Good morning, Commissioner King. Allow me to pull up the PowerPoint.
There we go.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Angela Georgiev. Bear with me, this is my first trip to PC, so I apologize in advance if I fumble over my words or have any mishaps. But I am presenting today, um, case number PL twenty-one dash zero 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 three. As Commissioner King stated, it is an appeal to the planning director's termination of coastal plan development permit LU zero seven dash zero zero seven two and parcel map waiver lot line adjustment, case number PL sixteen dash zero 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 six. As Megan stated in the beginning of the meeting, any public comment emailed to planning period P C comments at ventura dot org. For this item, make sure to put, um, I, agenda item number six in your subject line and make sure that your comment is two hundred and fifty words or less. The applicant has requested that the Planning Commission overturn the planning director's decision to terminate case numbers LU zero seven dash zero zero seven two and case number PL sixteen dash zero 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 six and direct the Planning Division to allow the applicants more time to prepare, prepare a resuminal package. The request before your commission is procedural and it's not a request to approve or conditionally approve nor deny the requested entitlements. To summarize, um, the coastal zoning ordinance, section eighty-one eighty-one dash five point one, allows planning staff to terminate an application when no reasonable effort has been made by the applicant to complete the application for a period of six months or more. To get your bearings, the project site located just adjacent to the Los Angeles County line, it's in the Santa Monica Mountains and in an incorporated area of Ventura County. As we can see here, the project site is encompassed with two legal lots. One, if you see this larger rectangle, it is nearly sixty-nine acres. And the other legal lot, this small little triangle on the bottom right, is just over two acres. The general plan is open space and the zoning is coastal open space. The background with this project site is that it originated with a violation on March twenty-second, two thousand and six. The violation was for confirmed brush removal and grading without a permit. As you can see here in the two thousand and six aerial, you can see the, um, estimated six point eight two acres of removed environmentally sensitive habitat area known as ESHA. It was done so without the benefit of a permit. The next few slides that I'm gonna go over is a chronological order of events for the project. These are highlights. There are some more details that we may go over later. And I want to begin with the submittal date, which is June fifth, two thousand and seven. That is when the applicant submitted a coastal PD application to abate the violation and to construct a single-family dwelling with various other accessory structures. That case is referred to as LU zero seven dash zero zero seven two. However, it was not until, um, two thousand and thirteen that this application was deemed complete. And when it was deemed complete, it was done so with advisories. Those advisories consisted of recommendations for the applicants to redesign the application in order to better adhere to special policies. And those included fostering the development. In two thousand and fourteen, staff received an email which was, um, declaring to modify the project description. However, the modification was the removal of a corral. The Division then replied to, um, the applicants in a letter, once again encouraging the applicants to redesign their application to be more consistent with LCP policies. Subsequently, meetings were held with the agents and applicant going over possible design elements more compatible with these LCP policies. In two thousand and sixteen, to be specific, on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, the applicant submitted a parcel map waiver and lot line adjustment, which is referred to as case number PL sixteen dash zero 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 six. And staff received this application. They realized that there was only, um, a proposed development for one of the parcels. At that time, they spoke with the agents and applicants and asked if it wouldn't be more, it wouldn't be better for them to actually submit to build two single-family developments at the same time rather than having to come in on a later date for another separate coastal PD permit? At that time, the applicants agreed and asked to suspend the application so that they could work on preparation of more technical reports for the project. Throughout two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, staff reached out to the applicants, inquiring when we could expect a resuminal date. In February of two thousand and eighteen, staff removed the project from suspension and deemed the project incomplete. I missed a slide, sorry about that. So, in July of two thousand and twenty, staff reached out to the applicant via email and asked when we could accept a resuminal for the project. At that time, the agent informed us that we would receive a resuminal within thirty days. Staff waited sixty days. And then on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, we prepared a, I'm sorry, staff prepared a termination letter to the application. At receipt of the termination letter, the agents and applicants requested a meeting with staff to discuss the termination and the project. On October twentieth, two thousand and twenty, the planning director, planning staff, the applicants, and the owner held a meeting to discuss the termination and the project. On December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty... This slide didn't change. Mine's changing here, it is... On December thirtieth, twenty, sorry about that, on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, counting, uh, planning staff prepared another termination letter. And in this termination letter, we gave a deadline of January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for a resuminal date. On January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant appealed the termination to the determination. To date, we have not received a resuminal from the applicants. To summarize, the applicant's grounds of appeal, they believe that they did not receive adequate notice for the termination. Additionally, they would like to still be able to submit an application with an approximate twenty-five thousand square foot building envelope. It was detailed in the December fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen letter. Planning staff, um, to the, uh, planning's response to the grounds of appeal, are that the coastal zoning ordinance does not require the planning director to provide a warning of impending termination. However, on July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, by email, the agent was informed that the county would terminate the application because it had been inactive for six months. The county's letter that stated December nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, did not prevent the applicant from submitting the current proposal. However, because it is a discretionary project, it also did not guarantee a nearly twenty-five thousand square foot building envelope would be approved. County's, um, correspondence with the applicants has consistently encouraged consistency with ESHA policies and redesign and encouraged the applicants to consider redesign efforts to better adhere to our ESHA policies. To summarize, the last incomplete letter that was written on February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, staff still needs the signed owner certificates, a current botanical survey, an accurate assessment of the ESHA impacts that were related to the violation and the proposed development, which also include the hundred-foot fuel modification. Additionally, there were extensive comments that were provided regarding the restoration plan that should be adhered to as well. Staff's recommended actions are to certify that the Planning Commission has reviewed... Okay, thanks, I couldn't read all the screen, apologize for that. Planning staff's recommended actions are to certify that the Planning Commission has reviewed and considered this staff report and all exhibits thereto, and all evidence and testimony received during the hearing. Find that this project is statutorily exempt from CEQA pursuant to section two one zero eight zero B five of the PRC. Deny in its entirety the appeal of the planning director's decision to terminate application case number PL one six dash zero 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 six, exhibit eight, and specify that the clerk of the Planning Commission is the custodian and eight hundred South Victoria Avenue, Ventura, California, nine three zero zero nine is the location of the documents and materials that constitute the record of proceedings upon which this decision is based. And staff is now available for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Angela, I'm gonna ask that you give us back the screen. Now, are there any questions from the commission to staff? Commissioner Duquesne?
We need to do disclosures.
Say again?
We need to do disclosures.
Oh. You know, I don't know what I'd do without Commissioner Duquesne. All right, before we proceed, we need to have, uh, have the secretary ask each commissioner whether they have any disclosures on this case.
Commissioner Boydston?
No.
Commissioner Duquesne?
I have no disclosure.
Commissioner McFail?
No disclosures.
Commissioner King?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Garcia?
None.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Duquesne, as always, for being my backstop. Now, any commissioners have, uh, questions to staff? I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking. Seeing none. At this point, at this time, I'd like to, uh, call on the appellant to make a, uh, presentation on, uh, on their, uh, Commissioner McFail, are you signaling me?
No.
Oh, okay. Let's, uh, give the appellant an opportunity to present on his, his appeal. Uh, I guess it's Mr. Dickinson?
I, Bruce. Unmute yourself.
Mr., there we go.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Bruce Dickinson and, uh, I just want to give you a, a brief history about this project and, uh, I acquired this property in November of nineteen ninety-one. And first I want to disclose that, uh, or let you know that the violations to the property were done by the previous owner. And so they had been in place for some time prior to me acquiring the property. And of course, those violations pass on to subsequent owners and that's why I'm dealing with them, uh, um, myself. But just please know that it isn't something that I had done to the property. Bruce, you said nineteen ninety-one. November of ninety-one. It was ninety-one you acquired? Or? Two thousand and one. I'm sorry, it's two thousand and one. Yes, thank you, Kevin. I got my decade mixed up. So, November two thousand and one, yes, that's correct. At the time, the, uh, the property, uh, previously had a planned development permit that had been approved, which included a large house, outbuildings, corral, stable, uh, a very large footprint on this property. And that planned development permit, uh, had expired when I had acquired the property. So, I went back to the county, uh, some years later after acquiring the property and talked to the planner, Debbie Moore, said at that time, who processed the original, uh, planned development permit and, uh, you know, said that I would like to just go and present the same project again. And, uh, she told me that she didn't see a problem with it. So I went through all of the requirements in order to apply and do the studies, the mitigation for the violation and all of that, and took a long time of considerable expense. And then, uh, as staff has, uh, indicated, the project was deemed complete, by, uh, Debbie in October of two thousand and thirteen. At that time, then, nothing happened for a period of months. And from what I understand, that is not something that is allowed, uh, with the county and that there's a time limit that should be acted on once a project is deemed to complete. I remember writing emails to Debbie saying that, uh, I hope that this is not going to hurt me, this delay. And, uh, then sure enough, uh, the next thing I know, Debbie is now not the planner on the project. We have new planner, new staff, and they have, uh, reviewed the project and don't like it at all and say that there's no way that they would be able to support the project, even though it had been deemed complete. So, rather than me taking the more confrontational approach and, uh, you know, fighting staff and, uh, even though that I may have had some rights with the county not acting when they should have, I agreed to go and, uh, downsize the envelope and, uh, you know, that was when the letter was given to, uh, us from, uh, Kim Prilhart, the planning director at that time, that we would be allowed to, uh, develop an envelope of twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety square feet on the property. And so I went through all the trouble once again to go and redesign plans and, uh, all the studies required and, uh, take all the time for that. And Kevin will be able to, uh, more detail all of the, uh, issues and things that he had to deal with which caused delays on the project. But please know that I had never wanted to delay this pro, project for any reason and that it was always me trying to get this approved. But it just seemed that staff continually gave us different things that needed to be done in order to, uh, to process this. I did have this other property, the small two-point, uh, two and a half acre property, which, uh, we did incorporate with a lot line adjustment to create, uh, a small house with only a ten thousand square foot envelope to be developed on that second parcel. But still, my intent and my tire, my perseverance was to get this project, uh, approved, um, as soon as possible. It just seemed that continual additional requirements kept pushing this further and further, down the line with, uh, what we needed to do. And so, what I'm being told now is that, uh, because of a delay, and again, we had COVID and also Kevin, who's, uh, with Wal, with, uh, Jensen, um, you know, he had, he had a baby, so there may have been a little delay with him, uh, during COVID and with his newborn, that there may have been a slight pause in getting some of the things that were being asked from staff into the county. That being said, though, what I'm being told now is that now the twenty-four thousand square foot envelope, which would, was agreed to have me allowed on this, uh, upper parcel is now not going to be allowed and that if we proceeded, uh, that, uh, staff would require an environmental impact report for this and that even with the findings of an environmental impact report, they see that it would be difficult in order to find, uh, that, uh, there would be overriding mitigating circumstances to be able to approve it as well. I am asking that this project be able to be moved forward and that maybe there could be some encouragement from the Planning Commission to allow staff to see and honor the previously agreed, uh, envelope of twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety square feet on a parcel two, which is over seventy acres. And I'm looking just for two houses on the... And I'm looking just for two houses on this large property. And would hope that there could be some encouragement from the planning commission to staff to allow me to proceed with this. And again, I just feel that there should be some reasonableness with staff, given the history of this, given all I've done and redesigning this, asking me once again for a third time, which is just onerous, in my opinion. And so, I'm happy to take questions. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Kevin, too, if had to answer questions. But Kevin would then be the one to let you know what he has done in order to push this project forward and, you know, during the multiple years that it's taken. So, that's all I have. Sure. Hi. Commissioners, thank you very much for having the opportunity to do this. Obviously, any appeal hearing is not a fun one. That's not the best thing that anyone wants to do or hear. Angela, thank you for your presentation. Angela is a new case planner to this, as you can imagine. This project, as Bruce said, has had many case planners over the years. And Bruce indicated a lot of the requirements for this project. It feels like the goalposts have been moving. And so, I would like to share a quick PowerPoint presentation. I'm gonna share my screen. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. This is our request as part of the appeal itself. Yes, we are appealing the the termination letter. So we're asking that it be rescinded. And the applicant is allowed to prepare a resubmital package to address the county incompleteness items and meet the criteria allowed square footage of the development outlined in the county's letter to the applicant in December fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. That December four... Excuse me, it's nineteenth, December nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Thank you, Angela, for catching that in your staff report. In that letter, that was the letter that Bruce is indicating that the then-planning director, Kim Prilhart, with the whole of the record, understanding that the project had an approved planned development permit. As many of you planning commissioners know, planned development permits no longer have expiration dates. This one did. It was during the time in nineteen ninety-one that planning development permits had expiration dates. And that project actually was given an environmental assessment. It showed where environmentally sensitive habitat areas were as defined in nineteen ninety-one. And it actually placed a restrictive covenant on Bruce's property in the ESHA areas, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And that is still on the title today. So, you talk about, you know, things changing over the years. You know, we all know that. Things change. The definition of ESHA in nineteen ninety-one was a woodland outcropping. It was for oak tree areas. It was for some sense of habitat areas, and they put a restrictive covenant on it. Today, ESHA is everything in the Santa Monica Mountains. Doesn't matter what it is, unless it's a road that preexisted between, before the coastal act, nineteen seventy-six. So this is a twofold, asking for rescinding the termination letter and asking that the county honors the twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-foot square foot upper lot.
Okay, Mr. Waldron? Could you give us just a moment? Commissioner Duca, do you want to interrupt with a question?
Yeah, may I interrupt?
Is that all right with you, Mr. Waldron? Okay, go ahead.
I'm taking notes and I see that there was October fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen application that was deemed complete and staff came back with recommended changes. And then all of a sudden, you started talking about nineteen ninety-one again. And it was a very good year, but I don't understand what nineteen ninety-one has to do with the twenty twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen application we're talking about.
Yeah, good question. Thank you, Commissioner Duca. The project that was proposed in two thousand and thirteen that was deemed complete was essentially a carbon copy of the planned development permit that was approved in nineteen ninety-one and expired. So at that time in nineteen ninety-one, planning commissioners that year had identified impacts to the project, one of which was ESHA, and put a condition of approval on the project, which was a restrictive covenant for the ESHA that was identified. And that was placed on the title. And so, when the planning department approved the completeness of the new project, which was a carbon copy of the nineteen ninety-one project, it was understood that 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 was something that could move forward. Hence, why the twenty-three thousand or twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety square foot was confirmed and affirmed by planning in two thousand and fourteen December letter that that was okay to move forward. Does that answer your question effectively, Commissioner Duca?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. I appreciate it. So, Commissioner King?
Yeah, you still have the floor, Mr. Waldor.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, I understand that the planning commission, this is an appeal hearing. So, your your decision is kind of constrained to a degree. And so, what we're asking is, you rescind the termination letter. This is a quick timeline that is more focused on the termination timeline. In July of two thousand and twenty, planning staff had indicated, hey, you know, how's the resubmit coming along? We had tried to resubmit in March of two thousand and twenty and they're gonna turn back. We were applying with a one-to-one mitigation ratio, but that wasn't allowed. We needed the two, two to one. And there was a couple other items that we needed to flush out. And so, we got that indication, hey, how's it coming along? And August, I emailed back saying that items are taking longer than anticipated and that, thank you for your patience. That is in the staff's exhibits. I'm not sure which exhibit it is. Let me just double-check here. It's exhibit nine in your packet, planning commission packet. And then, we got the notice of termination letter in September without any warning. And I understand it's not required by zoning code to get a warning. Hey, you know, unless you get something to us within thirty days, we're going to terminate. But that is something that I've experienced and other planners in the county have experienced as a precedence. From September to October, that was when we were finally, a month later, able to get a meeting with the planning director. And we appreciate the planning director's willingness to meet with us and lead our case as warranted. So, thank you to the staff and planning director for that meeting. And then it took another two months for that to be digested by planning staff and we got the final termination letter in December. So, and here we are, since January eleventh, when we put in our appeal, within the timelines, we're here in May. So that's four and a half months.
Kevin, hi. I have a quick question for you on this timeline. Out of curiosity, when did Jensen Design join? When was Jensen Design contracted to support this project?
Yeah, so Jensen Design helped Bruce with the resubmital of the what was the once-approved planning development permit design. And we were able to help him get the completeness determination in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any other questions?
Okay, are you ready to finally take... Are you done with your presentation, Mr. Waldor?
I do have some other quick slides here. So that's the timeline. In the December termination letter, the planning director determined the applicant is still permitted to submit the proposal of twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety square feet. And so, although it's true, county planning has allowed and offered the applicant to resubmit the twenty-four thousand building area, the December two thousand and twenty final termination letter from the planning director is unequivocally a death sentence to the project. Because as you can see in this letter, it states that the project will require an EIR. In the second paragraph here, it says that statement of overriding considerations is not supportable by planning staff. And so this is a complete reversal of the direction that we were provided for this project in the December two thousand and fourteen letter from county planning, allowing the twenty-four thousand square development footprint. And since two thousand and fourteen, it's repeatedly been stated to us, the applicant, that the twenty-four thousand would be allowed as long as the code, and I want to highlight that word, the code, is approved and codified documents of the county coastal zoning ordinance, the local coastal plan. It would be able to be allowed, the twenty-four thousand was allowed, unless the code was revised to restrict development to the square footage footprint. And so those amendments will require the approval of the planning commission. You. It would require the approval from board of supervisors. And as it stands today, there is no such code stating a ten thousand square foot restriction development envelope in the South Coast region. And so the termination letter from the December two thousand and twenty, this is the recent one, itself cites the ten thousand square foot maximum building envelope is a quote-unquote directive. That's in footnote number two of that letter. And this directive is not codified. It's not stated in the county's local coastal plan as last amended in two thousand and seventeen and certified by the coastal commission. Neither is a ten thousand square foot stated in the county's coastal zoning ordinance, last amended in two thousand and eighteen and approved by the planning commission. And so therefore, the applicant and Jensen, we continue to desire to resubmit this project with the twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-foot square foot building envelope in the upper lot. But to do that and to have planning commission, or to have planning staff tell us that we need an EIR and statement of overriding considerations is unsupportable. It's a death sentence to this project. And when we've been directed since two thousand and fourteen that twenty-four thousand square feet is allowed, as long as the codes don't change, that's the zoning code and the coastal local plan, and there is no ten thousand square foot designation in those codes. And so, that is a good example of how we feel this project has had goalposts moved. And we have redesigned per the two thousand and fourteen request to redesign the project. I'm moving to the next slide and I'm showing the approved project nineteen ninety-one and the historic roads that existed, the grading that existed pre-two thousand and seventy-six. And that's important because pre-two thousand and seventy-six roads are not considered a disturbance of ESHA habitat because it predated that coastal act. And the approved project is this is how it was resubmitted, this configuration in two thousand and thirteen, and it was deemed complete. And this was one single parcel. And with the redesign, we took out corrals, we reduced grading, we took out land areas that were going to be usable for horses. We reduced the grading footprint. And we redesigned it where we actually brought in a second parcel and did a lot line adjustment. And so, that is cluster development. The local coastal plan requires for consistency to do cluster development where possible. And so that was part of the redesign. And we did button up the footprint on all the on all the land areas. We redesigned and realigned the road so that it took up less grading. It wasn't as it was more effective in its land use area. And that second lot, if you can see my cursor, is ten thousand square feet development. And that was something that we realized planning allowed the twenty-four thousand on top, but planning also said, hey, if you're gonna do another lot, then that's gonna have to meet the ten thousand. And Mr. Dickinson was accepting of that. And so, cluster development was the redesign, an improved access, reduced footprint alignment. We removed the horse barn component. The old version had a secondary dwelling unit on one side of the road while the corrals and the and the land area usable space was on the west side of the road. So we took that out. And we reduced all ESHA impacts with the new design. And so we believe that that does meet the intent of the two thousand and fourteen letter to revise the design to decrease ESHA however possible. And so, this concludes our request and our presentation. There is complexity to this project. There's obviously years on this, so I expect questions and welcome that. But just to remind us, our request is to rescind the termination and allow us to move forward with the December nineteenth, twenty-four allowance of twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety square feet in the upper lot. The whole of this record really shows the intent of reasonable economic value. This project has gone on for so long and it was deemed complete in two thousand and thirteen. The redesign has happened. We've asked for lot line adjustments. We've asked for the PD for the exploratory and the reasonable economic use of this property is dependent upon having the twenty-four thousand that was promised in two thousand and fourteen. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer them. I also have, Don Jensen is on the line. He has historical knowledge of this project as well. And obviously Bruce is here to answer. So commissioners, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Any questions, I'm here.
Okay, can I get the screen back? So I can see the commissioners. Any more questions, commissioners?
Hi, I have a follow-up question.
Okay, Commissioner Garcia and then Commissioner McPhail.
My question is, what has been done to respond and provide the incomplete, the items that were incomplete, noted as incomplete in the record that we've seen, including the botanical survey?
Good question, Commissioner Garcia. Thank you. Yes, there has been an update to the botanical survey that was obtained by a local firm, project consultants. We do have that ISBA, which is an initial study biological assessment. The part of the requirement on some of the gaps was we had to wait for spring surveys. So, you know, you have to wait till flowers. And so, some of the delays were based on giving the biological survey of the plant species, the native species out there. There was also a fire that went through there. So that required additional biological assessments for what were some of the flowers and the plant species that were gonna arrive after that.
Maybe I should ask my question be more specific. So, my understanding is that an incompleteness letter was issued in February of two thousand and eighteen. So, the applicant would have known about the items, including the botanical survey that needed to be provided then. So between two thousand and eighteen and today, was a botanical... That's enough of a time period in order to, you know, wait for spring, as you said. So, was the botanical survey completed and submitted, provided to staff?
Yes, it was. It was completed. And I know for sure we've resubmitted that to county planning. One of our resubmittals in March two thousand and twenty had that in there. Prior to this termination letter, one of the questions that planning staff had asked is, you know, when was the last time this biological survey was performed? And actually, it was during our termination discussions with the planning director. And so we had provided them the date and they said that was still an acceptable date for an assessment. And that was back in And that was back in October.
I might point out that it seems that I've done, I can't multiple biological studies on this project. And uh you know, it just uh it seems like there's always another one that needs to be done. Um that's just my perspective.
Uh Commissioner McPhail?
Uh Commissioner Garcia asked my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia for being so thorough, any other questions? Okay, I have a few. Uh some of them actually are for staff. But for the applicant, I think probably Mister Waldron. I'm confused because I went back and read that December um letter from uh Director Prohart. Looking for wording that supported your assertion that um the twenty four thousand square foot footprint. Would be acceptable. And then I'm also trying to figure out how that extra ten thousand square feet. Now under Esha rules would be allowed on top of the twenty four thousand square feet. Although I can't say that I believe the letter gave approval for the twenty four thousand, but for argument's sake. Uh where does the extra ten thousand square feet for the lower house come from, is that on a separate parcel?
You are correct, that's under a separate parcel. If I may read from the twenty fourteen letter. It states on page one at the very bottom paragraph, based on our analysis, the planning division determined that twenty four thousand three hundred and ninety square feet. Is the maximum development area that can be allowed for your proposed project. And the required a hundred foot fuel modification zone around the applicable structures. And one access road will not be included in the maximum allowable development area. But these features will affect mitigation requirements. Open fence equation corrals may be sided within the required fuel modification zone. Provided that this is acceptable to Ventura County Fire Protection. But all other development features such as barns, tennis courts, water features, et cetera, must be located in the allowed development area. So twenty four thousand three hundred and ninety was allowed. Commissioner King, you are correct, where is the where is the ten thousand square foot coming? That is a lot line adjustment of a second property. So the second property is southeast of this uh large sixty seventy acre property. And by doing a lot line adjustment, local coastal plan, zoning code. The county of Ventura ordinances, the I S A G, the initial study assessment guidelines. Ask and request and say that development shall be clustered where possible using one access point. So by doing a lot line adjustment, you're taking two developable parcels. And you're actually clustering it as required by the code along one access point. And that is a means to preserve uh what county considers Esha and the Santa Monica Mountains in the south coast region.
Okay, but I have this other question related to that. I thought that um a lot line adjustment could not be processed while a N O V had not yet been abated. Is that, I mean, I can ask staff, but uh you ought to know the answer to that.
Yeah, so the grading violation that came out in, was it two thousand and three, I can't recall. Part of a grading violation can be uh fixed with a planned development permit using development as part of that. So the lot line adjustment and the planned development part. Plan development permit request and the water well exploratory well plan development permit. All is considered as the package that addresses the grading violation. And any development areas that exceed or do not contain those grading violations. Then get mitigated against at a two to one ratio.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and double check that with the with the staff. Um because that's certainly not my understanding of of how we could proceed. Uh let's see if we have anything else. You say you redesigned the road to reduce the the impact? Well, the road as previously laid out. Was exempt, but once you redesign that road, don't you then? Uh void that exemption and reintroduce the road as part, the redesigned road as part of an Esha encroachment?
Good question, Commissioner King. So the road that was allowed and uh approved in the P D permit in nineteen ninety one. And then resubmitted and deemed complete in twenty thirteen. Included a uh different housing floor plan for the upper lot. And it included a different driveway approach to the house. It had a uh large circular driveway at the top, the um road itself. Took a a curve that deviated from the existing dirt access road slightly. From the nine pre nineteen seventy six disturbed access road. And so what was approved actually deviated from the existing dirt road that exists here today. And it expanded the driveway area. In a circular drive pattern, which was really inefficient, and that was one of the redesigns. That Jensen came up with and the architect who redesigned the house to make it more efficient. If that doesn't answer your question, I can, I can. Maybe try, try a different way, I do have, I do have a uh in one of the slides I could show you. If you would allow me to share my screen again, what that looks like.
Go ahead.
So on my screen here. Is the left side is the historic roads that were pre coastal act nineteen seventy six. And that's outlined in these green polygons. So the right is the approved plan as nineteen ninety one. And it's probably very, very small on your screen, so I apologize. The next slide shows the alignment of that road and I'll try to zoom in here. So the road has. A guest house here to the right of the access road. And then a large arena corral area to the west. That has since been moved and that road no longer makes a curve left. And then right, and right here is a big circular driveway. That has been removed as as a way to reduce Esha footprint. And so the house has now gone into this area and reduced to ten thousand square feet. And the circular drive and the road has become more coincidental with the existing dirt road. And that is shown on this particular slide here. I'm sorry that this is a little bit clunky, but I I hope to answer your questions by by zooming in here. So this is the proposed reconfiguration and redesign.
Okay, um by the way, it's it's very clear, so thank you for that. Let's get the screen back. And uh. Last question for you, tacking on to Commissioner Garcia's questions. You know, I certainly understand the issue of having to have a a later spring biological assessment. Because, you know, you have to have the wildflowers blooming and and all the stuff. In those plant communities going on when you do the next assessment. But one of those uh outstanding issues seemed a pretty simple fix, and that was the ownership certificate, has that been done?
Yes, those have been done.
Okay, and you're holding on to them because they told you we're gonna throw the baby out with the bath?
So we have a resuminal prepared and ready. The requirements for the resuminal. There, from our perspective, more additional items keep being required to be submitted. For instance, uh a redesign of what would it look like if you did not do the lot line adjustment? So um a design to show a development scenario. For two lots not clustered. And the development scenario that we are proposing. That was, that's a, that's another item uh requested. For a resuminal. And that's to show that this is the the least impact alternative. And and that that's fine, we can, we can conduct that, we can do that. So. Your original question is, why haven't we resubmitted? And and the answer is, we have the materials to resubmit. But what we're, what we're seeing is, even if we resubmit, planning staff has indicated that it'll go to an E I R. And there are no supportable ways for this to have a statement of overriding considerations, and that's a death sentence and a change. To what we have heard since twenty fourteen.
Okay, uh anybody else have commissions for Mister or questions for Mister Waldron, Mister Dickinson or Mister Jensen, Commissioner McPhail?
Yeah, Mister Waldron, uh I haven't got the dates right in front of me, but what year was it? That all of a sudden now you have to have an E I R and the twenty four thousand is no longer on the table?
The termination letter in December twenty twenty. From the planning director is the first written evidence that it is unsupportable since the twenty fourteen. Letter that we were provided.
Okay, with 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 that answer, uh how many different planners have you had to go through on this project since twenty thirteen?
At least four, from my recollection and maybe. Maybe Angela and Jennifer, no, no, or Bruce.
A lot.
Okay, my next question is then, every time you receive the new planner. Did things change or did they stay the same?
The letters that were provided to us. You know, those are, those are physical, you know, incompleteness letters, so so those items still remain the same. However, how we could proceed forward, you know, we added the lot line adjustment after the twenty fourteen letter. And we tried to do the lot line adjustment by itself. We tried, we had to get a water well exploratory P D. We tried to process that. We got consensus from the county on these on these ways to proceed. Uh or what we thought were consensus consensus, and then when we re, when we submitted those. Uh P Ds for the water well and the lot line. Then it was brought to our attention that they didn't think that it could be proceeded through that way. And sometimes that was a result of a new planner. So I hope that answers your your question, Commissioner McPhail.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from commissioners? Okay, uh in that case, any, yes, Commissioner.
I didn't put my hand up electronically. Um I guess, you know, I look back at some of these letters and. Back in uh October two thousand and fourteen and it talks about. You know, that the project is um still inconsistent with the E S R policies of the county. You know, at best you were deemed complete with with advisories, uh which which basically said it's inconsistent with the policies. So, you know. I don't see anywhere where it says that you can build a twenty four thousand square foot house. You know, and to say that that it, you're doing exactly what what was done in. In nineteen ninety one and now thirteen years later that policies haven't evolved and we've gotten a little smarter about habitat. Um I think is a is a big stretch. Um so I guess, I guess my question is. You seem to be trying to drag us into reviewing development and and yet the hearing is for an appeal. Um of a termination letter, so. What, if if this appeal doesn't go through, I guess the question is. Uh you have every right to submit another project, right, for this lot and and start again. Are you going to do that or are you just going to, you know? I guess I'm unclear, you're you're dragging your feet, it seems to me, because uh you want to somehow. Keep the nineteen ninety one sort of environmental review intact, is that what you're trying to do?
Mister Jensen appears to want to answer that question, so Mister Jensen?
Good afternoon and good morning, everyone, it's an interesting way to conduct the hearing. I just wanted to make clarification there, Scott, we did not plan on a twenty four thousand square foot house. We're talking about a disturbance area. And the twenty four thousand square feet was actually negotiated between Bruce and I and Kim when we looked at the ominous part of. Esh, I mean, the Santa Monica Mountains idea that we could only have a ten thousand square foot disturbance area. And then she said, well, since you have such a large parcel, you could add additional square footage. For the additional acreage and move your development area out a little bit, she came up with the twenty four thousand square feet. And offered it to us, it wasn't like we were saying we're gonna build a twenty four thousand square foot home, we're talking about disturbance area. The second ten thousand square foot came along because we did acquire a second parcel which came in that same vein. With a ten thousand square foot disturbance area attached to it. So when we went back into the redesign, we said, okay, we have to work with the twenty four thousand, we had to work with the ten thousand. Because that was clear direction that we had from the planning director at the time. And that's what we've been trying to push through. Along the way, additional well had to be done, a P D permit for the well had to be accomplished, we've had arguments from beginning about what was Esha and what wasn't. Obviously, it's changed a lot since ninety one. Our professionals didn't think there was Esha in most of the area we were disturbing. The county's looking at the state definition of Esha saying it's all Esha, so. There's been a lot of subset discussions and decisions along the way. We have not tried to relax our attention on this project, it's just the mixed signals have been continuous and they've been. Very regular and we really just want the idea of getting to go back in with Bruce's plan with clear direction. And see if we get the lot line adjustment, these two development areas approved.
Okay, so you could do that in a new project even if we didn't uphold the appeal?
Yes, we could, but the appeal kind of gave us this platform to get a little input from the commission. We felt it was a little overarching that everything on this project's been delayed every time to submit, every decision takes two or three months. All of a sudden, we miss a month, a deadline by a month and all of a sudden we're being terminated. I haven't seen that happen before with such, you know, urgent, you know. You guys missed the deadline, you're out of here, I mean, that's not been the way we've dealt with in this county for the last X number of years, so. It felt a little bit disingenuous, disingenuous. We tried to approach the city, I mean, the county on that in November. Basically got kicked back on that and, you know, codified that, no, you guys can't be here, so that's why we filed the appeal.
Anything else commissioners? Okay, um before I close the public hearing, I have some questions to staff. Uh if you don't mind. Um because issues raised by the appellant. Caused me to need more clarification from staff and. And one of them, I'm going to direct at, I think Jennifer, because she's our local coastal program expert, as far as I know. At least in past hearings, it's always come off that way. Let me see if I can find the question. Here's a question. Appellant states that the 10,000 square foot disturbance restriction is not codified in the local coastal program. Is that, or is that not correct?
In Ventura, I'm just hearing some echo. Can you turn? Sorry, I'm hearing background. There we go. It, so the Santa Monica Mountains are spread out between three jurisdictions, City of Malibu, Los Angeles County, and Ventura County. City of Malibu and Los Angeles County have codified the 10,000 square foot envelope. Ventura County is in the current process of amending their Escher amendments to the local coastal program to include a 10,000 square foot envelope. We don't have that codified. However, I do want to reiterate, the coastal act policies and our local coastal program says to minimize impacts to environmentally sensitive habitat and to consider least environmentally damaging alternatives to meet that policy. And since then, since I've come on board, we have approved five coastal PDs in the Santa Monica Mountains that have adhered to a 10,000 square foot envelope, which further substantiates that 10,000 square feet is reasonable economic use of a property regardless of size and is consistent with Malibu and Los Angeles counties codified LCPs.
Okay, I'm struck by this fact, however. If it is not codified currently in the Ventura County Local Coastal Program and zoning ordinances, and if this project was deemed complete prior to that being codified, then those restrictions would not apply to their project. Is that correct?
Commissioner King? Sorry, the, so I'd like to reiterate that in 2013, in October of 2014, and again in December of 2014, staff informed the applicant and his agents that while they could come in with a larger development envelope, that would still have to be evaluated for consistency with the Escher policies. And as it stood, we felt that there was still an inconsistent conflict with Escher policies and minimizing impacts to Escher. And they were strongly encouraged to redesign. This coastal PD is a discretionary permit, so there is level of judgment. And seeing that there was no alternative analysis considering reducing Escher impacts, we wanted to ensure that the applicant and his agents were informed that when this did go through environmental review, there was a possibility that it would elevate to an EIR. And Kevin is incorrect. The EIR was mentioned in the October 13, 2014 letter from Dan Clement that said specifically, and I quote, "Because the proposed project will result in extensive removal of and potential indirect impacts to Escher, it is very likely that the initial study will conclude that the proposed project will require the preparation of environmental impact report." Mr. Ward's termination letter reiterated that and informed the applicant again that if he did submit, chances are that it would elevate to an EIR. As everybody knows, EIRs have to have overriding considerations that show that there's some sort of public benefit for this type of project. Seeing it was a private project, it would be difficult to make those findings.
Okay, Commissioner Reducus, that triggered a hand going up.
I want to have clarity about, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to have clarity about that. We have to be really careful about what, what we're saying here. Just because something has an EIR doesn't necessarily mean that there's going to be a finding of significance. We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves and are looking into the project itself instead of what is actually before us today. So all of this is, is fascinating, and I really appreciate Don Jensen saying that he'd like to bring this to the commission's attention. And I think that is a worthwhile thing. However, what is before us today is not whether or not there's going to be a finding of significance and whether or not there's going to have to be a statement of overriding considerations. We are getting way ahead of ourselves here. This has to do with whether or not there was progress made, you know, a good faith effort, if progress being made, and whether or not there was action and whose fault it was that there was no action for more than six months repeatedly. So can we just get back to that?
Okay, Commissioner McVale?
Yeah, I would just like to state that she did not answer your question.
No, actually, she answered my question to my satisfaction with, you know, lots of other stuff thrown in that I frankly didn't hear you here. But that's okay. I appreciate the fact that planning manager Welch made a good faith effort to answer my question, although it did go, as Commissioner Reducus pointed out, well beyond the case before us today.
Well, I, I, I did not hear anything, any comment about your question about the 10,000 square foot.
She clearly said that it wasn't yet codified.
Okay, I, I, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome, at least not in our local coastal program yet. Okay, getting back to, where is Planner Georgia? We haven't forgotten about you, and I didn't mean to step on your toes in going over your head on that last question. But a couple of things, and, you know, you're the new kid on the block, but you probably know this. Statement was made by the appellant that there used to be expiration dates on plan development permits, and we don't have those anymore. And it seems I've looked at a lot of discretionary permits. And one of the conditions is that they have to, you know, initiate the project within a year with some exceptions for extensions to that. But I certainly see no multi-year extensions. Is that accurate, that there still is a deadline to move a project from the, from approval to completion?
Yes, Commissioner King, thank you for bringing that up. I did want to point out that our PD applications still do require a land use or a zoning clearance for inauguration within 12 months of approval. That isn't something that has changed. I think maybe what Kevin was speaking about is the difference between maybe a conditional use permit and a plan development permit, where a conditional use permit has a time limit and a plan development permit doesn't. Perhaps that's what he was speaking about.
Okay, another question. Can a lot line adjustment be processed while there's still an active notice violation? Can a lot line adjustment be included as part of the abatement of the violation? Angela?
Commissioner King, I'm going to answer that on behalf of Angela. So Kevin is correct in that you can submit a coastal PD with development to abate a violation. The lot line adjustment, however, came in afterwards, after that PD application was deemed complete. And therefore, CEQA says it's the whole of the project. The lot line adjustment included the parcel that they were proposing development on. And so now we have to look at both the lot line adjustment and the coastal PD as one project. So under the PL 16 case number, that would be the whole of the action. And therefore, it not only would propose development, but also abate the violation.
So while they could, the lot line adjustment might be a strategy, it wouldn't solve the limitations on the envelope problem? Because if taken as a whole, the extra 10,000 square feet get, you know, piled on to the 24,000 square feet. Is that what you're saying?
As proposed, yes, that would, that would mean that they would be coming in with a 24,000 and a 10,000 in addition to the lot line adjustment.
Okay, that's all the questions I had of staff. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Boydston?
So a question for Jennifer. So when a project gets deemed complete, that doesn't mean that it has approval. It still needs to go through the process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other commissioners have questions from staff? Commissioner Reducus?
If I could just direct this perhaps to county council, what is actually before us and what are we deciding here? Because we've gotten into the details of the, the project itself. And I thought that this was a procedural matter and, and whether or not they were proceeding in a timely way. And if they were not, whose fault was that? Was it the baby? Was it the parent? Was it the staff or, or was it something else?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Reducus. As you just stated very clearly and as Commissioner Boydston recognized, the only issue before your commission today is whether or not the, the planning director's decision to terminate the application should be upheld based on, you know, the, the factors that, that you pointed out. The merits of the project are, are not before you today by any means.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barnes.
Okay, can I follow up with that?
Go ahead.
I'm directing to the, the planner or any of the planning staff. In, in the county's view, what is the reason for the, the cause of the termination? And I don't want to hear about 1991 or 2014. I want to talk about the six months and the year 2020, which was a very unusual year.
Thank you, Commissioner Reducus. So when the applicant submitted the lot line adjustment, there was no development proposed on the southerly lot. And we recommended that if they didn't want to come back in for a coastal PD for development of that second lot, they could consider incorporating development on both of the lots under the original coastal PD. And they agreed to do that. They agreed to phase the project with a water well and to come in with a proposal for both of the reconfigured lots. We've met them at the counter numerous times. We emailed them. We provided a lot of consultation as to packaging up this submittal to expand the coastal PD to include development on both the lots. We have yet to see that resubmital. The February 18 incomplete letter is based on just a lot line adjustment. But they decided to proceed with development on both lots, and we never received anything in response to that development package. And we consistently reached out to Kevin, asking him when this was going to be submitted. And he kept saying, another 30 days, we need more time, we need more time. And we never got anything back. And I'd like to reiterate that July of last year, again, I reached out to Kevin. And Kevin said that it would be in within 30 days. We gave him 60 days and still we got no resubmital. So we've really extended ourselves out, providing suspensions, extensions, and the like, and trying to help them get this package in. But we never got anything as of today.
And, and one of the questions that I asked our, our secretary last night was when she made sure that everybody was, got their Zoom invitation and everything else is, where, where are the new documents? You know, where, where are the documents that show that, that some forward progress was made by the, in that case, it would be the applicant instead of the appellant?
Commissioner Boydston?
Just another question of staff. So what, what broke, broke the back here? Is it staffing, time, is it fees? Why not give them, why, why, why the termination letter after all this time? You know, why not give them more time? We've given them, oh, lots of time, six, seven years?
You're correct. And we finally said that it's time to either get this project back into the queue or to terminate the application. And we pursued with the termination per the code.
So with the term, the termination, if they come back with a new, you know, a new application, they'll repay application fees and things like that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are they not going to get any money back?
I would have to look at the account, but you have to understand that when we take in, in a, in a fee, it gets distributed amongst all the county agencies to do their review of the project, and it is on a deposit. And I would not know if there's any refund or credit due back.
And, but, but if there was, he would get whatever the balance was back?
Yeah, if there's, if there's funds in there, they would get.
I mean, obviously, obviously, it, it costs money to, to do this review.
Yes.
Is, is the deposit up to date? Or is that in arrears or has been in arrears for years?
I don't believe it's in arrears. I didn't see any notice in the seller record that says that we have to stop work because payment hasn't been made.
Okay. You know, we've, with commission questions, we've maybe drawn out most of the staff's rebuttal to appellants' case. However, I have to, at this point, offer to staff and offer a direct opportunity to rebut any of the appellant's claims. Commissioner Reducus, you're going to correct me again, I know.
Well, procedurally, are there other people participating, participating via Zoom or whether there were comments from the public that might be following this? That should come before staff sending remark.
I told you, I didn't want to be the chair. You should have been the chair, but that's okay. You're my aide de camp. Before we move on to staff rebuttal, let me ask our secretary, do we have any submittals or public comments from the general public?
I received some emails from Don Jensen, but Don, you've spoken today. Do you want me to read into record what you sent me?
Yes, go ahead and read it. I mean, it's pretty simple.
All right. At this time, at, at time, Escher had entirely different definition from the one the county now uses in the Santa Monica Mountains. Our professional experts and were trumped, our professional experts and were trumped by county non-professional biologist's opinion. Years went by while county considered these reports and assumed other regulations would affect approval. A lot has changed since 2006. There is no recourse to the staff overreaching in this regard. The applicant should be allowed to continue in process. Staff has presented numerous delays for many years to Mr. Dickinson. And termination serves nobody's interest. That's all I have.
Was there another one from Mr. Jensen?
I, I put them together.
Oh, okay, great.
And that, that's, that's the cause of trying to type into the phone where you can't see what you're saying, but anyway.
All righty, any other public comments, Megan?
No, that's the only one I have received.
Okay, very good. Now let's get back to staff. Any further rebuttal on the applicant's assertions during their presentation? Okay. Okay, the appellant is going to get the last word here. Okay, the appellant is going to get the last word here. Any rebuttal to the rebuttal that didn't happen? I'm not.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to say that, you know, the project that was deemed complete was the one that had the large envelope with corrals. It, it was big, and the one that was previously approved. That was the one that was deemed complete. And we were encouraged, even though it was deemed complete, to go and redesign and consolidate. And, and that's what we ended up doing. And that's where we were then complying with the recommendation of staff to be within the 24,390 square feet of disturbed area for that one parcel at that time. And so the EIR, my understanding was that this was not, if we went and downsized this to the 24,000 square feet, that an EIR would not be required for us. And that was mainly, the, one of the main reasons that we, that I agreed to go ahead and start all over with the complete redesign of that. So the requirement for an EIR at this point is a surprise to me.
And I would add to Mr. Dickinson's comment there that the EIR would not be warranted based on that December 2014 letter, because the mitigation was stated in that letter to be two to one mitigation for ESHA. And so as long as the development footprint and the redesign of the project reduce the disturbance area, as Don had clarified, this is disturbance area of the house. And that you would mitigate the two to one ratio, that is the mitigation that would not require a EIR. And so that's what, that's what we've been asking for. And, and I, and I very much appreciate Commissioner Dukas' point that, you know, what is before the planning commission today? It is the appeal. And the appeal, yes. I had mentioned in my email to planning staff that, you know, it'll be 30 days. And within the 30 days, I sent a subsequent email and said, hey, items are taking longer than anticipated. And then we got the termination letter 30 days after. So yeah, we did, we did have 60 days. The county is correct. 60 days from the, hey, check in, how's the resummitl coming along? But there was communication between then and the termination date. So thank you for hearing this. We do think some major points were made today that the 10,000 square foot is not codified. And in 2014, the letter said, you can move forward with a 24,000 square foot envelope, reduce the design, we did. And you can proceed forward with this as long as local coastal plan for the Ventura County and zoning ordinance for Ventura County does not change to a reduced restricted footprint. And that is yet to happen. And so the December 2020 letter terminating this application flat out stating that this is now an EIR, and there's no statement of overriding considerations, is a death sentence to this project. Very different than what we were told 2014 to this date. So that's all I have from a rebuttal. And thank you for your time, commissioners. And we appreciate your decisions.
Okay. If I don't get scared down by Commissioner Dukas, I think I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and confine remarks to the commission. Is there any deliberation or a motion on the item on the floor? Commissioner Dukas?
I would move staff's recommendations for the following reasons. All of the details that go into the project itself are not before us. And so all, all of that, for purposes of today's decision, are irrelevant, what, in my mind. It, it appears that, that there were a lot of factors that went into why the, the project didn't move forward. But some of that was on, on the applicant, judging from the information during, that was presented during this hearing, the timeline, that the extraordinary, you know, pandemic year, 2020, didn't, didn't appear to play a part. And staff changes all the time, planning commissioners change all the time, planning directors, it, it doesn't matter. None of, none of that, you know, it's, it's, so what? Whether I'm here or, or someone else is here, it's, it's still our, our county code. I think some, some things going forward were very interesting about, about, you know, the codification of 10,000 feet and what rules should apply to this project that is more appropriate for when that project is before us. Right now, it's just, did they, did they make forward progress in that six months? And in my mind, they did not. So I would move staff's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion? Commissioner Boydston, is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second, but I'd also like to make a, make a comment.
Okay, let me move on to discussion, and we'll start with Commissioner Boydston.
So it, it seems to me where it all gets fuzzy here is when there's a request to, to tack on something in the, in the hearing process that isn't supposed to be heard, and isn't part of what we're doing here on this, on this project. I can really see two sides of this and giving, you know, and not terminating this project and letting it continue on for a bit, seeing what 2020 was and, and how we were all handicapped through that process. But the fact of the matter is, I think it gets a lot clearer if we don't, if we terminate it and let them start again. Because I don't like the idea that we're sitting here in the hearing, and there was all this, this sort of discussion, trying to link, you know, development, you know, to an environmental document that was done in 1991. All the background stuff's very interesting. But this project needs to move forward if the applicant wants it to move forward, appellant. And, you know, the bottom line is, it's got to go through environmental review of some sort in today's world. And at the end of the day, if it's an administrative permit, as I understand. So at the end of the day, if the director denies it, and, and then it will come to us anyway, you know, on, on an appeal. And that's where the discussion we had today, we centered around development, which I don't think was, was quite appropriate. And, and my advice would be, if you're going to do the project, start it again, go through the process. If it gets denied, then we'll hear all this over again, some, some, somewhere down the line. But don't, don't drag your feet in fear of an environmental document. Don is, is very good at, at processing those things and, and looking for mitigations and findings. And, and I have all the confidence in the world that they can get a project up there done. That would be my comments.
Okay, other commissioners? Commissioner McPhail?
Yeah, I, I agree with both of those statements, the maker of the motion and the seconder. But I do have a problem of one thing, and that's staff saying, because LA County and the city of Malibu has a 10,000 square foot, we're going to hold everybody to a 10,000 square foot in Santa Monica Mountains in Ventura County, even though it's not codified yet, and even though they're working on it. My only concern with what's happening is the applicant, I'm sure, will resubmit for the 24,380, whatever it is. And by that time, before approval, the way things move slowly through planning and getting to us, they're going to be held to the 10,000 square foot. And I just have a problem with that. But I understand what we're supposed to be voting on today. And I will have to vote in the affirmative, but I'm not real happy about it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I, I want to put my two cents in. Because there's a lot of merit in the commission being sure that we limit our decisions to the matter before us. But let me introduce this other idea. And that is that the appeal is on the action of staff to basically terminate the, the application for lack of adequate progress. Clearly, staff has exercised a certain amount of discretion in not bringing this to us earlier for what appeared to be a variety of reasons that I was trying to dig into a little bit. Unfortunately, it made it look like we were debating the project. There are all kinds of reasons why there were problems with staff, miscommunications, issues with the applicant. But the fact is that there was some discretion on the part of staff as to how long to allow this process to move on. What I was exploring was, is there any justification for the commission to step in and allow more time, as staff has done repeatedly, to kind of bring this to a, to some kind of resolution? Having said that, I find myself right back where I was when I read the initial staff report. And that is, if narrowly viewed, staff is correct in saying, this has gone on long enough, and we have to put an end to it. It's consuming too much staff time. And for that reason, I'm going to support the motion. And the only one that had, Commissioner Garcia, did you want to weigh in or just want to vote? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Let's have the secretary call the roll.
Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Dukas?
Yeah.
Commissioner McPhail?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, appellant. Thank you, staff. Moving on to agenda item seven. Report by the planning director on board actions and other matters. I haven't seen Director Ward yet. Is somebody standing in for him? Okay. Planning manager Welch?
Yes, Commissioner King, this is Jennifer Welch again. Dave Ward had another appointment that conflicted with this hearing. So he's asked me to step in and give you the briefing for the upcoming planning commission hearings. On June 17th, you'll be hearing from code enforcement on a property owner appealing lot coverage determination and the legality of structures. This was rescheduled from the June 3rd, 2021 hearing date. On July 1st, you'll be hearing again from Franca Rosengren and Winston Wright with some additional amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance that is targeted on correcting grammatical, topographical, and punctuation errors and updating regulations for clarity. And then on July 1st, you'll be hearing from Marilyn Miller with the Harbor Department on an appeal of the construction of decks beyond the rear property line onto county property without a permit. And these are three different appellants, three different property owners, all with the same concern of extending decks out onto the beach. And that concludes the briefing.
Okay. Commissioner Dukas, I think you had a question.
Where is that lot coverage located, the June 17th, 2021?
I apologize, I don't see an APN on the agenda, but I can get that for you.
Just for clarification, that originally was supposed to be before us at the last meeting, was postponed to June the 3rd, and then it's been postponed again. So that's the one out in the Tierra Raja Valley.
Is it, is it yours, or is it, which, which district is it?
It's close, but I think it's ours.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of staff on this report? Yes, Commissioner McPhail?
I don't know if we're going to Zoom or not by then, but I will be in Alabama on June 17th and July 1st. So if I could Zoom in, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and let me, because we're, we're now on 7B, but I've had some conversations with our secretary. My understanding is that, you know, we're not yet to the point, and it all kind of hangs on the, what the board chair, Supervisor Parks does between now and then. It does not look like those meetings will be in practice. Maybe the second one might, but we'll certainly take into account. But there are some complications, just so that you know, that if we begin meeting in the, in the boardroom and a commissioner wants to Zoom in, there are some Brown Act issues that may not be covered by the governor's emergency measures during the pandemic. So, you know, hopefully that begins to answer your question. We'll certainly take all of that into account.
But if we're Zooming now, what difference does it make if I Zoom in from Alabama?
Well, because if we are in the boardroom, the, the Brown Act currently says that the public has to have access to everyone. So they would technically need to have access to you in Alabama.
Well, they, they would have access to me by Zoom.
Well.
I understand what you're saying. Chair King is saying that we won't be, if, if I could guess, we won't be Zooming.
Correct. So basically, Earl, it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be resolved by county council at some point.
Okay, well, I, I need to talk to county council on a different issue when we're done, if that's okay with Jeff.
That's fine, yeah. And, and the issue is the, the Brown Act. It's, we're basically working under, as Commissioner Chair King so rightly said, we're working under Brown Act exception, basically, that lets us have the Zoom meetings slash hearing. And so the uncertainty is how long that exception is going to remain in place. And so the concern is that if the, if the state gets rid of that exception, and we don't have any information on when, and even if that will occur, then the issue, Commissioner McPhail, is that you could not, you could not Zoom in from Alabama based on the default teleconference rules of the Brown Act.
Okay, I, I understand that now. So if that happens the 17th and 1st of July, I will not participate.
All right. Anything else under 7B, other commissioner have items that they want to bring forward for future meetings? Hearing none? Okay, Nora, I'm going to screw this one up for sure. I want to adjourn the meeting without objection. Is that okay? Okay, then, without objection, seeing none, meeting stands adjourned.
Jeff, please don't leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.